And for that, Mr. Juliana will take a minute and I'll give you the floor.
Thank you, and good evening. So, over the last several board meetings, we have introduced a tentative budget, reviewed the budget in summary form. There's been opportunity for the board to be able to have any conversations that it would like. This is essentially the culmination of the budget process prior to adopting a final budget. The final budget must be adopted by May 11th, which will be the next board meeting. So, let's get into the budget details, and we'll start out with some facts. I know Mrs. Becker loves this particular portion of it, and we've got some new information in here, some new and updated information. So, let's talk about the district. East Brunswick Public School District is the 30th largest school district in the state. That's in comparison to an overall 588 school districts, public school districts, or 675 public school districts and charter schools throughout the state, and that's as of October 15th, 2016. We have, we provide an inordinate amount, not inordinate, an actually impressive amount of instructional hours, nine million instructional hours last year. We remain the largest employer in the township. And in terms of our population, while East Brunswick Public Schools has a population of students and staff has declined over the last several years, we still are quite a sizable population. So, when you look at the comparatives, and we've got comparatives in neighboring towns from 2014 and even the township for 15, we're at almost 10,000 people between our students and staff. It's quite remarkable, making up more than 20% of the overall town's population. We operate a major transit system, 570 routes, traveling 6.75 million miles over the course of the year, transporting what would be the equivalent of 2.33 million passengers. So, that's the equivalent of 271 trips around the earth, 28 one-way trips to the moon, and one-fifth of the distance to Mars.
Mrs. Becker, which trip are you going to be taking?
You get a choice. In terms of meals served, we've repeated this each year, but I think it is valuable in understanding the kinds of services that we provide. And so, in terms of meals served, we are a major food service provider. 425,000 meals were served as of March 31st of this year. Last year, for the entire fiscal year, we served over 571,000 meals in comparison to some of the other major food providers in town. For the other providers, the data is a little bit dated, but nevertheless, it's still pretty impressive in terms of a comparison. Buildings. There's a correction from prior slides. I did a little bit more research on the U.S. Capitol Building, and the actual floor area of the Capitol Building had been overstated in previous year's presentations. Capitol Building's actually smaller overall floor space than the Brunswick Square Mall. So, when you look at the combination of the U.S. Capitol and Brunswick Square Mall together, it is about the same floor space as we have here in district in terms of all of our facilities. And we are just slightly smaller than the Freehold Raceway Mall, which I think is a relevant comparison that everyone's familiar with.
I think the important story there, though, Mr. Juliana, is that it is a comfort to know that the Freehold Mall is larger than the U.S. Capitol Building. And nowadays, one might wonder if more productive.
One might actually conclude that it is more productive.
Just saying.
And that comment does not represent the opinion of the board. In terms of land, 274 acres of land that we maintain in comparison to some other known and not-so-known areas, Six Flags Great Adventure, 510 acres, the entire town of Helmet is 576 acres, and Disney's Animal Kingdom has actually increased from prior presentations. They acquired some more land and enlarged their footprint. We participate in a number of activities that conserve our financial resources, and without getting into all the details of them, they range from energy to cooperative purchasing to debt refinancing, one of which we just did a few meetings back, in refinancing some bonded debt that will save us on interest costs. So, moving on. The district is also a revenue producer, and this is key, and has really an integral aspect, integral part, to balancing the budget for next year. We have various programs through our community programs department that not only provide services to our parents and to the community, but also generate revenue that help to sustain the school district, from our early morning and after-school programs to our enrichment programs and to the rentals of the Performing Arts Center. Striving for excellence, I'm just going to scroll through a number of these, but I picked out a series of examples that I think are extremely relevant to represent the district's And while those examples reflect student achievements, let's also recognize our staff achievements over the course of the last year, as noted on the screen. We have several notable items there. And I'll also note, for the fourth consecutive year, the district has been awarded the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Association of School Business Officials International on its 2016 fiscal year audit. And just recently, we were notified, for the second consecutive year, the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Governmental Finance Officers Association. So, the excellence really is in every area of this district. Moody's Investor Service comments annually on the financial status of the school district and does this for every governmental entity, whether school district, township, county, and so forth. And as of February 1st, 2017, Moody's comments were with regard to our credit ratings, that the credit position is very strong, and the district's AA2 rating slightly exceeds the U.S. School District median of, the U.S. School District median of AA3. The school district's net direct debt to full value is slightly lower than the U.S. median. The financial position of the East Brunswick Public Schools is healthy overall and slightly favorable to its AA2 rating. And based in terms of management and governance, the balanced financial operations are a sign of sound financial management. In this case, East Brunswick Public Schools approximately broke even, whereas tax base generally contracted. I noted in a previous meeting, from a finance perspective, these are very good accolades. Finance folks don't tend to embellish in terms of the opinion, and so this says quite a bit in terms of the financial world. And the benefit of that, before I go forward, really, the benefit is that by having such an excellent result in terms of our finances, it impacts our ability to borrow at lesser rates and ultimately saves the school district funds and the taxpayers' funds on the market when borrowing. So, let's move on now to budget facts for next year. So, what are the factors impacting the bottom line? Certainly, revenue is a major factor. Where that revenue comes from? From state aid. We are also dealing with a 2% cap on the tax levy. We have revenue that comes from budgeted fund balance, which are funds regenerated from the expiring school year that were not expended, and enterprise operations, which come from the community programs operations I mentioned earlier. State aid, it's an important piece. To note that our state aid has remained relatively static for the last eight years or so, after a significant drop in the 2008-2009 budget year. State aid remaining relatively flat, and it essentially shifts the burden to the local taxpayer. There's no two ways about that. We continue to have increasing costs. That is a fact of life, and yet the state share of the burden has essentially decreased over the years.
It's not just that it's flat. It's, you have to look and see what a decrease we took in 2008-9?
Yes.
And then became flat.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. We're looking at a $2.4 million decrease that occurred in that span of time. And what's not seen here is the fact that not only was there a $2.4 million decrease in the state aid, but we also experienced approximately an equal amount of reduction in our budget to fund the Hatikva Charter School.
Exactly. So, that's about a $5 million swing?
Yes.
In the wrong direction.
That's right.
And I've got to say this again, though. A $2.4 million budget decrease from '08-'09 to '09-'10, and then it stays flat, and then we're saddled with a $2.5 million charter school obligation that we didn't really have much input into.
We had no input into.
Yeah. So, that is critically important to keep that in mind, what that does to our programs. Mrs. Becker.
And also, people hear "flat funding," and they're like, "Oh, you're getting the same amount you got last year." I am correct, Bernie, in saying that it's really a decrease because everything goes up.
No question about it. When we look at the state aid as a percentage of our total budget, that percentage has been declining year after year, in spite of the fact that it might appear to be relatively static with some slight increases on occasion. As a percentage of the total budget, it actually has decreased each year. So, moving on. What are the factors impacting the bottom line? Well, on the expenditure side, certainly, the primary focus is continuation of the educational services that we provide. It is the hallmark of the town, and so it is our obligation to ensure that we maintain that. We've also had unanticipated services, staffing, and tuition costs that were incurred in the current year that will roll forward into next year. Health benefit costs, the obligations that we have under our collective bargaining contracts, and charter school costs. We mentioned earlier that charter school has taken a significant chunk out of the budget, and it continues to do so as it increases each year as well, and I'll go over that in a little more detail. And lastly, the shrinking enrollment that we are seeing. Although slight reductions each year, the enrollment in town has been going down, and so that doesn't mean that there's an equivalent reduction to the budget. We still need to provide the services that we do. The enrollment shifts have been across the board, and so it's certainly not sufficient to have an impact to be able to make any substantive changes in terms of the overall budget. Some additional background. So, as of March 10th, as we were developing the budget, where we stood was, with an estimated revenue of $148.9 million and appropriations at $151.3 million, we had a shortfall of almost $2.4 million at that point in time, which had to be bridged prior to presenting a tentative budget. What does that 2.4 essentially amount to, or how does that derive? And so, putting together a few key areas, salary and benefits being our largest segments of the budget in terms of what our growth areas would be. We have about $2 million of increase in salary and benefits, resulting from not only moving forward from one year to the next, additional special education positions that are necessary for next year, and some unanticipated positions that had to be filled in the current year that were not budgeted. Health benefit increases at approximately 7.28%. Special education tuition, between our regular special ed tuition increases, the anticipated reduction in IDEA funding that we've been advised to include in the budget, and some unanticipated tuition incurred for the current year, we're looking at a tuition increase of approximately 37.49% in that area. Extraordinary services are another area, increasing approximately $275,000. And then, in pupil transportation, we're seeing a modest increase, not only in the contracted services, but also in the fuel to operate our vehicles. Charter school payments, overall, will be increasing $109,000, almost $110,000. And our employer, FICA, we are an employer. We have obligations as an employer, and so we pay into the FICA system. That, too, will be increasing going into next year. So, in looking at our overall appropriation growth with those selected items and our estimated revenue growth of $2.4 million, which is attributable to 2% on the tax levy, we're looking at an overall shortfall between those items and the revenue of 2.5 million, very close to what our budget development shortfall was reflected in the previous slide. So, it's kind of a reconciliation to help give a snapshot into what are the causative impacts. So, how are we bridging the budget gap? Various appropriation adjustments. Postponing a lease purchase financing, which was to provide funding for the Warren's Door for roof replacement. I will note, as I've said in the past, that while the lease purchase financing is being postponed, it is not postponing the project. That project planning is underway now and will occur, the project will occur as planned. So, that is a project that will take place in the summer of 2018. IDEA Title I funding is going down based on the guidance we've been provided from the Department of Education. Our exit payments have been reduced based on our estimates and projections for retirees leaving the district. We've reduced our unemployment compensation reserve and taken a reduction in what we believe our health benefits net rate will be as a result of a positive experience in our claims. And we did as much as possible to do what we could without affecting people and program. We also took in some additional revenues. We took a hard look at our tuition revenue from other districts, and we're able to make some adjustments there. Performing Arts Center equity, the net that we are anticipating coming from the Performing Arts Center was bumped up, not to an amount that we didn't believe could be sustained, but it really underscores the importance of those revenue generators, because once we tap those revenue generators, they must continue. They can't go away. We have to do everything we can to sustain those for the future, because if we don't, then we'll have a hole in our revenues, and that could ultimately have an impact on what we can do on the appropriation side in terms of services. Early Learning Academy Equity Transfer will be opening. We're projecting to open additional sections there that will also generate additional revenue. And lastly, because of the increase in health benefits, the percentage increase, we need to utilize a tax cap adjustment that will enable the increase of the tax levy from 2% to slightly more than that as a result of health benefit costs. And even with all of that, we had to turn to staff. And the first piece is support staff. We have six and a half FTEs that are being reduced in the budget for next year. And of the requested staff in special ed, one of those full-time positions has been reduced to a half-time, and that has been quantified by the special ed department, that we could do that without having an adverse impact on services. So, with that said, the estimated revenue and appropriations are now in balance, as per state law, we must have a balanced budget, and we're looking at a general fund tax increase of $2.8 million. Conversely, our debt service fund tax will be decreasing, almost $600,000. As a result, our net tax increase is $2.2 million, or 1.73%. So, the net is actually less than what the cap is for next year.
Let's stress that again. What is the cap?
The cap is the maximum that can be raised under the law on the regular operating budget, which is 2%.
And, but we're at 1.73.
The net is 1.73, so we are below the cap.
That's an important thing to stress.
And does that include the health benefits waiver?
It does. It does. So, the tentative budget continues to support and also improve our programs, co-curricular and athletic activities, reflecting the comments that we received as a result of strategic planning last year, curriculum improvements, and technology investment. In staffing, we will be implementing the World Language Mandarin Program next year. There are several teachers and support staff required for new special education sections that must be opened to comply with our legal requirements. Clubs will be increased at each of the elementary schools, Hammershaw, Churchill, and the high school, again, in direct response to the community through the strategic planning process, as well as the addition of eighth-grade baseball, which was in response to the community's feedback last year. We will be centralizing our registrar functions in district. While that is being reflected as a full-time equivalent position, that position is actually being funded or reallocated from within existing positions. And lastly, with the shifts in enrollments, we are looking at a reduction of nine elementary-level teachers, based on the class sizes that we're projecting at this time. We've been monitoring this very closely, and we'll continue to monitor this moving forward. There may be some areas that, if enrollments kick up at certain grade levels, a school or two may require the re-addition of a teaching staff member, but that's something that we are monitoring, and we want to ensure that all the classes are within the ranges established by board policy, and currently, they are. We did our most recent update as of yesterday, and all the class sections are projecting to be within the ranges.
And then, Mr. Juliana, the last slide.
Yes.
That's fluid every year.
Absolutely.
It's just important to note, we have a baseline.
Yes.
But there's always going to be a little bit of movement here and there, depending on needs.
Yep. And we have, and we'll respond to what we need to do in terms of, you know, what happens with enrollments. It's just the way it is. We have to function that way. In curriculum and instruction, I mentioned already the implementation of the Chinese Language Program. The budget also includes music technology equipment and nonfiction texts and various science support kits for the elementary schools, and continuing on in the textbooks for marine biology, academic physics, chemistry, intro to business, and so forth. We have some equipment that will be purchased, a laser cutter, percussion equipment, concert basses, and we will be replacing the band uniforms, which are about 20 years old. And with this replacement, as we've tried to do with many other areas, we are building in a replacement plan so that we don't go 20 years between replacements, so that we can replace our band uniforms on a more frequent basis, as we are now doing with our athletics, which are on a five-year cycle, and we've done with other equipment, like our buses and trucks that need to be replaced. We've tried to put things on a cycle so that they don't become blips in a budget, but rather they're constants. Comparative data, took some selected areas and wanted to provide that information. So, in charter schools, when we look over the last year, last year's expenditures, the current year budget and next year, we're going up to a $2.7 million appropriation in fiscal 2018, an increase over current year, which is at 2.6, approximately 2.6 million, and the prior year was almost 2.3 million. That is a large chunk of funds that, if we look at what I talked about earlier with regard to the shortfall, you can pretty much look at this area as being one that would have easily bridged that had we not had to fund the charter schools. Regular instruction over the last three years has remained pretty steady. We had some, probably our biggest increase going from 2016 to '17 is related to our contractual requirements, but otherwise, and also the retirements. We probably had a large amount of retirements in the prior year. Special education, basic skills, bilingual education. We're not seeing anything particularly drastic here. The numbers are pretty consistent. Special education tuition, this is an area I talked about earlier, going up to about $3.2 million, a very significant increase over the current year. Guidance and student assistance and child study team services, that has been a pretty steady expenditure, not any significant changes there. Speech OTPT-related services, extraordinary services. We do see a blip here in the latter, in the extraordinary services, and this, again, is related to what I talked about earlier with regard to providing the special ed services to students. This is a result of costs that are required under the law. Co-curricular activities have been steady, and athletics as well. Any increase that we're seeing here is directly related to the changes that have been implemented to affect the recommendations that came from the Strategic Planning Committee. And that concludes the budget. The final budget will be adopted May 11th, and anyone that is interested in reviewing information may do so on the district website. All of the board's materials are posted there. If anyone would like to see the actual paper copy of the document, it is available in the office of the School Business Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Juliana. Any questions from the board? And as you're taking your seat, this is the public hearing on the school district 2018 budget, so if there are any members of the public who wish to comment on the budget, the 2018 proposed budget, this would be the time to do that. No one wished to comment on the 2018 budget? All right? On the budget or on?
Well, more like expenditures than where the money's going to.
Absolutely. Come on up to the podium. This is the appropriate time to do that.
Thank you.
And please state your name and address for the record, if you would.
Name and address, all right. Wait, so just name?
Name would be fine.
All right.
We can get by with that.
So, my name is Ray Chen. I'm actually a 10th grader at East Brunswick High School.
So, that's where you live?
Well, yes. So, when talking about a budget, I want to talk about more of the expenditure process, like where is all this money going to? And specifically, I want to talk about kind of like the inefficiencies and the optimization of a budget. And what I mean by this... And what I mean by this is while we have, we do have this movement towards technology, and I, as a STEM student who appreciates this art, I love it and thankful for this movement, you need to address like different formats and how effective it is. So one of my personal experiences is for a class project, we needed to make a research presentation, and the only asset we had was our iPads, given by the school district, publicly funded. However, when using the iPads, the issue is I would log in, get logged out, log in, get logged out, log in, get logged back out. To the point where it's just inefficient, and it's just a waste of time and it's inconvenient. In fact, if you gave me encyclopedia, pencil, and paper, I would probably get more work done. So when addressing where this money is going to, I want to make sure that when we're investing all these different things, it's helpful for the student. As if it's just a waste of time, I think it's just also a waste of taxpayer dollars. And to build off of that, I also want to address the optimization. And what I mean by that is how much farther is the education going to improve with this technology asset? Now, I understand that different teachers have different means of teaching, whether it's through lectures, whether it's through interactivity, or whether it's just through different forms of communication. And I respect that, and as long as the student themselves are able to learn from it and it's optimized, that is fine. However, not all teachers utilize the technology at hand. So an example would be, I noticed in some classrooms, there'll be a smartboard. However, the teacher would never actively grab one of those markers and write on it, rather it would just be the projector aspect of it. So rather than having a smartboard itself, a projector of itself is sufficient, and therefore the smartboard is just quote-unquote a waste. If you're not going to use it and you're only going to use the projector aspect, there's no need to have the reimplementation of this. Another example would be, we have an excess amount of computers in certain classrooms, and while it is necessary for like something like computer science and like coding, it's not necessarily necessary in other classes. In fact, I remember a class where we had six extra computers, however, we only used those computers maybe twice a month. And it's because of this that it's kind of a waste, and I feel like it's not an optimization of the assets provided. Now, an alternative, which you guys already implemented, which I'm really thankful for, is the Chromebooks. They're versatile, they're mobile, and it suffices every teacher's need, as if you need a Chromebook now, you have one, which is great and which is very versatile, which I appreciate. So I guess the comments I want to address is that while we are having these new assets in technology, it's not necessarily efficient, it's not necessarily helpful, as the iPads themselves were not very functional, and not all teachers need a smartboard, not all teachers need extra computers. So maybe an idea you guys could play with is some kind of like communication between the teacher and the administration, the sense of what they need for the assets and tools. So if one teacher needs, my students need extra computers for improvement of education, they should address it. And as long as there's a tangible amount of demand, hopefully, we can allocate some money from the budget, specifically technology industry, to meet that demand. If another teacher who needs more art supplies in order to address their demand, then as long as the demand is there, as long as they have proof, we should suffice it. But if there is no demand, if there's no real need for these different areas, there's no real need to spend extra money to supplement these fields if it's not necessary. So to summarize everything I want to say, is to address deficiency and optimization of learning experiences, I feel like there needs to be better communication from the staff director, as well as, sorry, the teachers and the administration, to assure that the teachers have the proper tools in order to create the optimal environment for students to learn. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. One second. Mr. Leopold, would you raise your hand? Go down, would you mind letting Mr. Leopold know, not at the dais, but let him know which room you're having difficulties with your iPad, so he can make note of it? He is our chief information officer, our technology officer. Let him know that, and we can get that squared away for sure.
Thank you.
Okay. On the other thing, I would just say that, and you may look at it differently. One of the, I think, the positives of our district is that every classroom utilizes technology as the instructor and the teacher sees fit. Sometimes it's a huge part of learning, sometimes it might not. And sometimes it's evolving, depending on a teacher's comfort in starting to integrate our equipment into the curriculum. And our curriculum evolves also. And I can say, and Mrs. Gulick is in the audience, our curriculum director, at least from my perspective, Mrs. Gulick can address this much better than I can, that technology continues to take a larger and larger role in every aspect of our curriculum. And you've seen a piece of it.
Yes.
And those who will follow you will see it even more. You know, and I'm thankful for that. So I appreciate your remarks, and we will get those iPad situations taken care of.
All right. Thank you.
Mrs. Becker, and then.
You're very articulate.
Oh, thank you.
Very, very poison articulate.
He's educated, East Brunswick.
Cool.
Just might provide some comfort in your mind, what you may not know about the budget process. So we receive budget manager reports in the different, from the different areas of the district. And the budget managers speak to the building administrators, the principals, the subject supervisors, department chairs, and yes, teachers, so that they bring us a snapshot of what their area does need. So we are receiving input from all aspects of the district, just to let you know that it's created by collaboration between so many people. And also, as Todd alluded to, the cooperation and collaboration between our technology and curriculum department has never been greater. There is incredible collaboration between the two for a lot of the same reasons you're talking about. So hopefully, this brings you a small measure of comfort, because if I wasn't a board member, I wouldn't know about the budget process, the creation. So I applaud you for your insights and for wanting to speak about this.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for answering my concerns.
Dr. Valesky.
I just wanted, I appreciate your remarks, and I appreciate the sincerity with which you stand before this entire crowd and deliver them, too. But I want to put something in perspective for you.
Yes.
From the time you were in Churchill until the time you're in high school right now, three-year time period, we've made massive investments in our infrastructure and technology. We've moved light-years in that three-year span. And have we done everything exactly right? Absolutely not. And so we're looking for ways to improve that. But I like your use of the word "optimization," because that's a word we use all the time about how do we make an optimum environment for our students? And we are constantly looking at the newest technology. We don't always adopt the newest technology. Sometimes we back away from that newest technology because it doesn't work for us. But the very things that you kind of mentioned, as a student, you're looking at from your lens, and you have a number of other students, you have, you know, 20, 200 students at the high school, who are looking at the same kind of environment that you're looking at. So I appreciate your look of where we are, and they're impactful, but I assure you, we are looking at optimization all the time. So I appreciate your use of that word.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. And Mr. Leopold, raise that hand again for him, if you would. All right. We are still in the public hearing on the fiscal 2018 school budget. Anyone else with any comments, questions on the school district budget? Okay. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing.